She was just here. Oh, no, the other van, the other van.
Okay, at six o'clock, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So. We had a little bit of a mix up. We're going to begin the meeting prior to the meeting of the select board. We're going to have a public hearing on the general assistance ordinance changes. The notice for this public hearing said that it was at five o'clock and there were three select board members were present, but nobody came, so probably nobody was coming anyway, but. So first we'll have the public hearing on changes to our town's general assistance ordinance. This is assistance provided pursuant to state law to people who qualify and come in and meet with Irene, who's our person responsible for administering this program. And the state has provided a chart of the amounts to which eligible people would.
We're back, just back to them.
Did you mute everybody? Thank you. So this has been available for review at the town office. Is, does anybody have any questions or comments they want to make on the proposed general assistance amounts for October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026?
Amounts?
Right, that's, yeah, that's. Do you have questions about something else about that ordinance?
Oh, I'm just curious, I tried to find it online, I think I may have, but. Is our ordinance talk about indigent cemetery plot? Does that?
There is.
Part of the dental assistance.
So, yes, there is a proposed figure that people would be entitled to for the coming year, the burial cost amount if someone qualifies after meeting with Irene is $1,620. They, of course, would already have to have a plot. This is right, I mean, this is just.
The only time I've had one application for a burial and the general assistance director has to be notified within 24 hours of the death, or the funeral home has to notify the general assistance director within 24 hours of receiving the body.
That's a very short time.
It is, it is. A lot, and this particular situation, they didn't know if they were going to be able to find a family member or not. So basically, you notify the general assistance director, so you have a base. And in that case, they were not able to find a family member. I was able to get them more money from someplace else. And there was no family member to claim the body. So we had a resident of St. George sitting on a shelf at the funeral home. So what, and Dawn said that there was one spot that would hold one coffin or four cremated remains. And she couldn't imagine anybody wanting it because it was off in a corner by itself, it was only the one spot. So any St. George, basically, any St. George resident that has no family member to claim them, we can bury them in that one spot.
Well, and I, I take back what I said because I was assuming you'd already own a plot. But it looks to me like from the language, this is part of Appendix H, that because it has an asterisk that says a lot in the least expensive section of the cemetery unless they can provide a lot in a municipally owned cemetery. So it does seem like these issues are something the cemetery committee and Irene could coordinate on to make sure there was a clear understanding if Irene gets calls in the future about, you know, what.
Yes, and I, I think it would be a good idea for me to meet with cemetery committee just so that everybody's clear.
Right, and Dawn, the sexton.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a family member that can claim the person, you know, that's ideal.
Right, but even if there's a family member who could claim the deceased, if they qualify for the general assistance, there are amounts in the statute that.
There are.
So, so it would be good for everybody to have a shared understanding about that. Are there any other questions about this? Yes.
Yes. Is there a criteria where the person would get a stone? I know that that person has a stone. So is everyone going to get a stone as indigent? No, what's the criteria?
That one was donated.
Oh.
And it was not a family member that donated it.
Okay.
So I'm not going to refuse that.
Yeah.
But.
But they can have a stone if somebody.
We will accept a donated stone, absolutely, absolutely. The funeral home will typically provide with some old marker with bright plastic, yeah, and the funeral home would typically, would be willing to provide that.
Yeah, it's nice, looks nice, but yeah, it's nice.
So. If, if that's the end of the public hearing, we can now move on to voting on the proposed general assistance ordinance and the, and I'll make a motion that we adopt the state appendices to our general assistance ordinance and we are adopting where multiple counties are listed, we're adopting the amounts for Knox County, so that's my motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's all five of us, thank you. So. We'll now close the public hearing and open the select board meeting for tonight, September 22. Do people have any adjustments to the agenda? Tammy mentioned that we need to note acceptance of resignation, so I'll include that of committee members. And I have an addition that I'll bring up about submitting public comment in support of our paramedicine program. Do you have any adjustments? Oh, you, you put it on there?
Yes.
Okay.
You submitted that last tweet.
Okay, but it isn't on the one that I printed out, so I didn't know. It's always somehow, I print out the first one I get and then I don't always catch the new stuff. Any declarations of conflicts of interest by select board members? No. We need to approve minutes from two different meetings. The first was August 25th, is that right?
Yes.
Did people have a chance to review the August 25th draft minutes? Were there any other changes people wanted made? Some want to make a motion that we approve those?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? That's five. And next are the minutes of the September 8 select board meeting, do people have a chance to look at those? Tammy sent you a change, you got that, okay. A motion to approve those?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? That's five, thank you.
Good job, Judy.
Communications from the public, do people have any to report?
The only thing I want to report is several people verbally said to me that they see friable asbestos at the house at the corner on Port Clyde Road, you know, Marshall's old house. That, I guess when the siding was pulled off, you can see debris in the back in a pile.
Wasn't the siding the asbestos?
Yeah, but that's what's like crunched up in the back, and once you crunch it up, then the fibers become airborne, so it's a concern.
I know he is in the process of still cleaning up that property.
Well, it really should be covered so that it doesn't escape, it doesn't become a fugitive emission, it doesn't escape into the air, we're not breathing it, so. So I mean, that's not, somebody didn't tell me that, but I just happened to know that.
So maybe even a turbo brew.
Yeah.
Good idea.
And is that something the code enforcement officer would be able to address?
I don't know that. I'm trying to think of when Terry has done any enforcement on demolition. I can't, I don't, that's typical.
It's a DEP function usually.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I'm noting it for the record, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but that it shouldn't be out there like that.
Maybe you could at least ask Terry if he feels it's something that he should raise with the state, if it's a public concern. We did have communications about the status of English Town Road, which we're going to address during executive session. Nothing else? Okay. The warrant for expenditures Irene sent us today. I did have a couple of questions, what was the seaside sale? Eight hundred dollars?
The cemetery. Sounds like a plot.
Oh, okay.
A plot to do what?
But it's, if it's a debit for eight hundred dollars, is that because?
Sorry, I guess I should have.
So this is, that's my first question.
Okay.
It's one thing if money comes in, but when money goes out.
So that would have been.
Would it go out to go into the trust fund for some?
That's exactly what it is.
Okay.
That's exactly what it is, the money came in and then we put it into the reserve or the trust.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay, thanks. And then I see that there was 24,000 to Gartley and Dorsky for engineering work, I assume. Is that?
I was curious about that, too. Was the H and H study at Driftin Road that was required by FEMA?
So is FEMA going to reimburse us for that 24,000?
Seventy-five percent of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
And there was, there's a dispersment for 3,000 for an aerial survey for a property map? Do you know?
That's.
I guess that's the survey that we always have done for our property maps. I don't think that it was.
Basically, the annual update of the maps. That's something that occurs every year.
Yeah, we pay him that same amount every year.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, then we are approving the dispersment of 700,282 dollars and four cents as set forth in the treasurer's warrant. Is that correct, Irene? That's the amount there at the bottom? Okay. We will send this around for everybody to sign. Are there any public comments about issues other than those on the agenda for tonight?
One small.
Anybody know? All right. Items in regular, our regular session action items. Gary Plant, who we appointed recently to the budget committee, he and his wife have moved to town and he's an accountant. They live on Scraggle Point, and so they have an appreciation for the risks of sea level rise, shall we say, and he's interested in serving on the resilience committee, so. When do you want to make a motion that we?
I make a motion that Gary Plant be, become part of the resilience.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? That's five. And Tammy, you had a resignation we needed to accept. So this is Beverly Emerson is resigning from the solid waste and recycling committee. And you'll bring to us somebody to.
I think I'll be looking for a new member and appointing a new chair.
Okay. All right, will we accept her resignation with regret? Steve, I see that you were going to update us on the solar project at the school, that proposal.
Okay, make it brief, I attended the meeting, Tammy was there virtually on Zoom. And there was some expert advice from a lawyer from Drummond Woodson on any potential risks or lack of risk, and there was a person from, I don't remember where she was from, the other woman that talked on Zoom, these people were on Zoom.
Oh, she's working with them with the new HVAC system.
Right, so there was some questions about that. And, and what scale the solar project would need to be to accommodate the, the new heating and cooling system at the school, which is going forward. But in the end, after all this quite a bit of discussion, the school board voted five to zero against pursuing the the project with Revision Energy. There was also the gentleman from Revision Energy who had worked with the school, school board and, and school officials for quite some time on this project. And he was extremely disappointed with their vote, but that was, that was the way it went, so that is a opportunity that was not going to happen because the, they would have had to vote yes and start work on it immediately to to get the, the things rolling before the programs that would fund it end. And that, that will happen at the end of this calendar year. And it's probably not an opportunity that will be available anytime soon again. So they gave various reasons for opposing it, but I, I don't think I'll go into those now.
Any questions?
I can say more, but.
And we also have two school board members, if anybody has.
Right, yeah.
Ken Oldberger attended the meeting, chairman of the conservation commission, and Susie Ellis, who's head of the resilience committee, was, was also there. Both of them in favor of the, the solar project, which was estimated over the life, like over twenty, cup, 25 years would save perhaps a million dollars in, in in costs, electrical costs.
And Van, you have a question or comment?
Or Kristen.
Okay.
He's muted.
You're muted, sorry.
Okay, there we go. I want to know a little bit more about the reason, Steve. You know, historically, the problem was the the control box that they have wouldn't handle things, but the new system going in was supposed to allow for the ability of revision to work with the school.
Kristen, can you address that since we have two school board members, Van, there, rather than have someone interpret their reasons? Be better if they gave their own reasons.
Yeah, so we had Aga Dixon from Drummond Woodson provide a number of of items that were potential risks that we needed to make sure we understood. But big, my biggest, I mean, there was multiple reasons that many of us went through was that the engineers from EEI all had really concern, the engineer that provided her, Carrie, that's vice president of the company, she outlined that the system was oversized and that when you have an oversized system for the type of proposal that was given to us, it wasn't the same cost savings we could see in different scenarios. I also had concerns about the plan that had a power line through the playground. One of my colleagues had concerns about space, that this was next to a nature playground. We were given a lot of half information at some points where, oh, you just get the array for free at the end. Well, on paper, it says it's a hundred and $6,000. So the, the project had a number of concerns and we didn't feel comfortable, or at least I didn't feel comfortable voting yes at that point in time, and there, there was a number of misinformation that were going around. We first met with Revision at a committee meeting back in December, not two years ago. So that was my reasoning and anyone else has any more information, I know Mallory's at her children's soccer game trying to do both, but.
Had, had you suggested that perhaps Revision might come back in the future if they could address these problems?
I mean, I, I said that I'm happy at facilities to look at other proposals and scenarios. Nobody said I hate solar and don't want to do solar. It, it was a very long-term contract to enter into very quickly with professionals giving us feedback that this was not the best proposal for our size. And there's a lot of unknowns at this point, too, that we're, we're using formulas to speculate how much energy the school's going to use with the new HVAC system in our new CTE building. We haven't even generated a year's worth of, of data for the new systems, so it's a very, a very quick timeline to make such a long-term plan that it was just not something that myself and others didn't feel comfortable voting yes for.
Okay, well, as, as long as the options are open for the future.
Yeah. I understand these tax credits are not going to be available as of the end of this year, but when the right proposal comes forward, then we'll certainly do what's best for the district and the town.
Okay, thanks, I don't want to take any more time then, thank you.
Thank you for that, everybody, thanks, Kristen. We're gonna, oh, I have one other thing that I wanted to do, I sent this to the select board members. The state is applying for some federal funding under the Rural Health Transformation Program. And public comment about submitting for this funding is available till October 1st. And since some funding, if they got it, would go to programs like our community paramedicine program, I wanted to ask the select board if you would agree I could submit public comment in support of this funding using the letter that we sent last year with information from Katie Jacob about our community paramedicine program and benefits of it to our community. So would people be supportive of that?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay, well, then I'll, I'll submit that. Thank you. The town manager's report.
None of them fun to report out on now. We were able to address Ridge Church Road and add in some gravel and level it out and at least make the the dirt road that goes through the cemetery, that is a town road, it's kind of a bizarre town road, but this one. And so that's more passable now. And so I reached out to a couple residents who've been concerned and they were very happy with the improvement, so.
Right.
That was good. The electronic speed feedback signs that we got at the spring and that you still have not seen around town. We just got permission to put them on CMP poles, and so whether, you know, Steve will be working on some brackets to, to do that, but for a while, we were trying to figure out how we could do it in a way that they're semi-permanent and could still be moved around, but we got permission from CMP, so. The speed study on Hartsnack was complete, but I've not heard anything back yet. I imagine that by next spring, though, when things start picking up again, that road will have new speed limits assigned to it. And then, I don't know, there were some things. We'll leave that to print out.
There is one thing I could add that to your report, which is that, I assume Steve did it with you, but there's improvements to the ramp that we walked down to the beach. And, and people were swimming there today when I went by, and one, and the guy, and two women, one was his wife, and he had some difficulty walking and he was able to negotiate it without a problem, there's dirt and packed, I mean, it'll get washed away eventually, but it's packed over the rough rocks, so it's really a lot easier to walk down the ramp.
Yeah, Steve's been keeping up with that, and he, it's good until we have a 10-foot or higher tide and then and, but I mean, he's pretty quickly down there again. The ramp will come out in the middle of October and then he'll stop and sort of chasing that. The, now that we have the H and H study from Gartley and Dorsky for Driftin Road, we're going to begin working on a plan to reopen that road for the spring, we've been working with Jimmy Calig on having that at sort of the top of the, the priority list before the summer gets real busy. They are recommending a 15-foot wide culvert.
Fifteen foot wide?
Yeah, rather than the five-foot box culvert that was there. And so.
That's bigger than the one on 73, right?
I don't think so, but I think it's pretty close.
That one at 73 is a monster.
You, how are you even going to dig a hole deep enough to put that in? I, not, I, not my problem.
We will figure it out. And that is all, of course, we are hoping to get the, the extension from FEMA for that project, so. Which we've been working through the process for, so I don't see any reason that we would not.
All right, we're gonna only talk about committees that have met since we met last or need something from us, so it's a planning board.
Well, the only thing, this isn't neither of those two, but I'll just say that the Breeden, the consideration of the Breeden application is pushed back till October 14th.
And the emergency services committee, have you heard from the sheriff a date when he would come down and?
That was the other piece, no, we do not have a date yet, but I will be sure to let you all know when we have one.
Okay.
I have had more complaints about sort of the same reckless driving issues now in new spots, I think you will notice them. I think you will notice them. You just passed Wallston Road going up Flatledge Hill. So that sort of brought some new neighbors into the equation.
Stop that, Tammy. So, um, on October sixth, our next meeting at, at six o'clock, there will be a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. And as soon as that public hearing is over, we'll proceed to our next, uh, the regular select board meeting. And October twentieth at six P M, we're having a special town meeting solely for the purpose of voting to adopt the comprehensive plan that's been approved by the state. So, um, everybody put those on your calendar and definitely come to the special town meeting on the twentieth.
Is that at six P M?
To vote at six o'clock. Is there anything on the shellfish committee, Tammy?
Um, let's see, the shellfish committee met on Tuesday, September sixteenth, five thirty at the Long Town Office. Testing of clam blasters continues. A clamor there at the meeting thanked David Taylor and others who have, who test to keep the, um, flats uncontaminated or semi-uncontaminated. And for the conservation work that they've done over the many years. She said clamors are able to dig a, an excellent product.
Well, that's great. Citizen science.
Good news.
It works. That's great. Um, was there anything else about the solid waste committee other than Beverly?
Let's see, they have, um, new, the new board member, Bruce Fagley, is very surprised about the cost related to disposing of the town's trash. And he's been speaking to other people in town who have all of a sudden woken up to the fact that it's very expensive to get rid of our trash, so. That may be an issue kind of going forward, I don't know. Um, Ben said that, um, twenty-three tons of mixed paper was sold to Canada for a profit of eight hundred and five dollars.
Good.
Yay. And that's twenty-three tons of trash that did not go to the landfill.
Great, recycling your paper.
That's right, no tipping fees for that.
Right. Um, as of January twenty twenty-six, Tara said that they're gonna be looking at new dump stickers, which will be yellow. I think she said will be issued, um. Residents will need to have a proof of address to receive a sticker. And Tara mentioned that the town office needs to create a seasonal, like a temporary sticker. Um, Ben says people come in with like a piece of paper with the sticker stuck to it 'cause they don't want it on their car because they're renting a cottage or whatever. But they'd like to come and get rid of their trash, so they're gonna look at something that might, you know, be laminated that they can just stick on their dashboard and then they take it, leave it at the cottage for the next person. It would be a seasonal temporary thing. Um, the recycling committee will vote for the new chair at the next meeting and the committee also needs another member.
All right, maybe you could have Bill Batty post on, on the website that we're looking for a new member for that committee. I think all the other committees except the Bo- the Board of Appeals also needs a new member. So those are the two that I use numbers. Brian, um, Parks and Rec, no? Okay.
I will add Ashley is stuck in Italy, um.
Oh, that's terrible.
No, I mean, they'd sit in the airport, so it's not.
Oh, no, that's.
There's a strike going on at the airport.
Well, I hope they had a lovely time before that.
The, yeah, they did, uh, but she's gonna be a couple of days longer before she's back to work, so.
But she can only use that excuse once, right?
The resilience committee.
They, I have not attended a meeting since our last select board meeting. There was one on Friday in South Thomaston, but I had guests, so I did not attend.
So before our next meeting on October sixth, there is that?
There, on October second, there's the resilience plan meeting and that's funded by a shared grant with South Thomaston. October first is the meetings in South Thomaston, the second is here.
At the school.
At the school, I think, and, um.
And it's at four thirty.
It's at four thirty, there's childcare provided. There might be food, I'm not sure where we came down on that. So everyone's invited for that. And if you can't, you can only go to the October first meeting, you're welcome in South Thomaston.
But for most people, it'll probably be more convenient.
It is more convenient here.
So I, I would encourage people to go to that so that we can all learn about this work on a community resilience plan that the committee is hard at work on. Um, so for follow-up items, that's, this is about to close up our regular meeting. I will send the, um, the comment to, on this federal funding. Brandon will let us know when the sheriff is gonna come. And do we have any other follow-up things? I don't think so. All right, so I will now move that we enter into executive session to discuss legal advice from the town's attorney regarding the status of English Town Road pursuant to one main revised statute, section four oh five, six E. Do I read here? All in favor? That's five of us, so we'll excuse, um, the members of.